Make sure that she wanted to take, they want to take those today. This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, November the 4th. Please stand for our invocation led by Rabbi Steve Silberman, Public Safety Chapel. And remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day and for this convening and this fresh administration. We pray, God, your hand continue to be upon our new mayor, our city council, all of our elected officials, and our entire city government. Would you bless them today as they care for the business of this city and the great people that live here? Give them wisdom, guidance, understanding. Send your presence, oh God, for issues and matters of disagreement. And we ask, oh God, that all would be done unto your glory and for the betterment of the people of this great city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Ingram.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning on our first meeting of this first term. Um, we would like to welcome everyone to our November the 4th, 2025 meeting. Uh, at this meeting, we do have rules at this time. I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Interpersonate designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in the resolution, the public hearing agenda item or ordinance, uh, appealed before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Interpersonate designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must sign up, uh, by Thursday, 2 o'clock PM before the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will indicate the end of two minutes. One minute will remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who recognizes any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decor, there will be no undue applause or public outcry aloud. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of October 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? May this approve.
Communications to Mayor Charragatis.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, good morning, everybody. Um, there are a few less people here today, but we had a big day yesterday. Uh, it was an exciting day. Uh, I thought a special day for our city, a personal point of pride. I have one of my children, we call her Skittle. She has terrible stage fright. And she got up there yesterday and belted out the, uh, um, the Pledge of Allegiance. And I was very proud of her. So happy to have my family here, to see the family members of the council members. Uh, I'm just so excited to get to work with this city council. Uh, I'm looking forward to it. Honored to begin this next chapter of our city with you. Um, there's a lot going on already. Uh, we've got some important items on today's gen- agenda. Uh, but we've also got some exciting events coming up. Uh, we've, we as an administration have started to work on establishing key task forces for a few of the areas that, um, you know, I think are important for our city moving forward, like a gun violence task force, public transportation task force, economic and workforce development task force, uh, a task force designed to look at activating the waterfront and how we speed that up uh, and do it in a way that comports with our port activities. A few more will be, uh, coming up. We'll be announcing those soon after we, um, myself and some of the council members get to meet about those. Uh, I'm also going to start the work over the next 363 days of meeting every singular employee personally in this city. It's going to be tough. We've got over 2,100. Um, but I think that's important. If I'm to be the leader of the city, I need to know the people who are really making it run on a daily basis. So I look forward to that. We, we've got a, uh, application fair coming up, and I want everybody to know about that. It is seasonal, but it's the barricade crew application fair starting next week. Our traffic engineering department will host this, this fair for our Mardi Gras barricade crew. Um, obviously, this is a critical role in making Mardi Gras parades work. Uh, it's also one of my favorite parts of every parade when the crew comes through and cleans up. Um, so, uh, they, they work hard to keep our parades safe and traffic moving. We're looking to hire up to 30 seasonal employees at a starting salary of $15.60 an hour. Uh, this, this application fair will be from 8:00 AM to noon on Wednesday, November 13th. Uh, and that'll be at the traffic engineering facility on Gale Street. So if you know anybody interested in that, please direct them there. We'll be sharing more about this event on our social media pages. Uh, but please do share that with anybody who might be interested. Uh, I also want to highlight something that's happening tomorrow. Exciting. We've got a ribbon cutting coming up tomorrow morning. Councilwoman Ingram and I will attend a ribbon cutting for the first house built through the city's housing improvement program. Uh, this was started by former Councilman Carroll. The hip aims to revitalize the historic campground neighborhood. Uh, we will, we hope to build and will build 30 new homes across 30 blocks, reducing blight and bringing families back to this historic neighborhood. Uh, the first home was built by Heritage Homes and will actually be purchased by one of our Mobile police officers. So I'm really excited about that. We want our officers and our public safety workers living in the community that they are serving. Uh, and so I'm, I'm very excited about this. Hope everyone can join us. Um, affordable housing is critical to the quality of life, public safety, and economic development. And I'm excited to see what this program is going to do in the campground area. Um, finally, uh, I've been told to invite everybody to the lighting of the Christmas tree. Uh, my family will be there, all my kids. Lord knows they're going to want to push the button, but I might still retain the right to do that. Um, that's going to be on Friday, November 21st. It'll be, um, in Mardi Gras Park. Uh, this event is one of Mobile's most beloved holiday traditions and marks the start of the Christmas season before Thanksgiving. I think that's before Thanksgiving. Some people might get upset about that. Uh, the celebration runs from 5:30 to 8:30. It'll feature live music, food trucks, crafts, and of course, a visit from Santa Claus. It will not be me. I'll have the honor of lighting the tree for the first time as mayor around 6:20 PM. It's a wonderful evening for families, neighbors, uh, and visitors to come join. So I hope everyone will consider joining us for that. Should be fun. Uh, and finally, my, my last thing, I do have one proclamation. So I'm going to ask, uh, Tony, uh, Zadro to step down. VP of Marketing and Development for Goodwill Easter Seals. Oh, we've got a stand-in. Where is he? Playing golf? Oh, he's sick. Well, please tell him we hope he heals up. Uh, tell me your name, ma'am.
I'm Stephanie Jacobs. I'm the Communications Manager.
Thank you, Stephanie Jacobs. Thank you for being here. All right, let me read this. Um, so this is a proclamation from the Office of Mayor. Whereas Goodwill Go- Gulf Coast, which is headquartered in Mobile, Alabama, serves 10 counties along the Gulf, Gulf Coast and Alabama and Florida as a leading nonprofit provider of services for people with disabilities and others in need. And whereas Good, Goodwill Gulf Coast provides programs and services to help individuals and families overcome challenges due to disabilities and other barriers that impact economic well-being, self-sufficiency, and quality of life, including early intervention programs, employment services, job training, and educational and social services. And whereas, to help support these valuable community programs and services, Goodwill Gulf Coast is introducing the 2025 Christmas on the Coast Ornament, the 32nd in a series of limited edition Christmas ornaments. This year recognizing the historic Gulf Coast snowstorm of January 21st, 2025, which shattered 130-year-old records for the most snowfall and the lowest daytime temperature ever recorded in Mobile. I didn't know that. And turned the city into a winter wonderland for all to enjoy. Now therefore, I, Spiro Charragatis, the 100th Nightmare of the City of Mobile, do proclaim, hereby proclaim the Christmas on the Coast Ornament as the official 2025 ornament of the City of Mobile, Alabama. Thank you. I'm assured I'm not the only one getting one of these today. I will say I'm excited to have this ornament because this is the day I announce my run for mayor. So, thank you very much. Uh, and that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's some, uh, good news for tomorrow at 9 o'clock AM. Um, we need more, uh, investments, um, into especially the urban neighborhoods where we move in police officers, first responders to these, uh, more affordable homes and everything. But, uh, I plan on being there because that's some great news and we need to do a whole lot more of that in this, in the city and everything. All right. Madam Clerk?
Motion for adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on February the 15th on St. Anthony Street and February 17th on St. Anthony Street. Move to lay over for two weeks.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeals laid over two weeks.
Request for wave of the noise ordinance on November the 8th on Suzanne Circle.
So moved.
Thank you.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal pass.
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to consider the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 600, 700, and 800 West I-65 Service Road South.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public, today is a public hearing to fix costs for demolition of structures at 2661 Bet B Street, 2906 Knoll Street, 777 Wellworth Street, and 1807 White Avenue.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address these, these items? If not, these particular public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Jacob Cooper.
May we pass these?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jacob Cooper. I'm here as a father, not a lawyer, not engineer. Just a daddy wants to know that when our children walk to school, every safeguard promised by law is actually here. Right now, that promise is being broken, and several school zones across Mobile, some of the most important warning signs are missing, the very signs that tell drivers a child is nearby. That a school zone has begun or that the reduced speed is in effect. Those signs are the first line of defense between a distracted driver and a child crossing the street. I know this because I've seen it firsthand. At Fonda Elementary, I uncovered a massive oversight. The school zone had been missing key signage for decades. Once it was brought to light, it was finally corrected. But we shouldn't have to rely on this one citizen to stumble onto decades-old mistakes before something gets done. And our crossing guards, the human face of safety, are being sent out without proper tools. No official stop paddle, no lawful command device recognized under the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. That's not just unsafe, it's not compliant. The MUTCD is clear. Hand signals alone are not legally enforceable traffic control. Alabama Code 325830B requires that all traffic control devices conform to the MUTCD, currently the 2009 edition. Those standards define everything from the placement of school zones signs to the equipment crossing guards must use. In January 2026, the 11th edition becomes a national standard, tightening those requirements even further. We shouldn't wait until the federal deadline to do what's right for Mobile's children. I'm asking this council for three things. One, audit every school zone, verify that every sign, beacon, and mark required by the MUTCD is in place and working. Two, bring all zones into compliance with the 2009 MUTCD now and prepare for the 11th edition. Fix what's missing, replace what's faded, and repaint what's gone. Three, equip every crossing guard with a reflective vest, whistle, and official stop paddle as required by the MUTCD. We can't keep issuing tickets in zones that aren't legally marked. We can't ask guards to risk their lives without lawful tools. And we can't call ourselves a family-first city without overlooking the safety of our very children. We send to school each morning. This isn't about blame, it's about responsibility. Mobile can lead. When it comes to protecting our children, we don't wait for Washington. We act because it's right. Let's audit, correct, and equip. Let's make every school zone in Mobile safe, lawful, and worthy of the trust. Parents give this city every morning. Our kids are counting on us. Let's not make them wait another day. Thank you. Uh, I, I do want to mention that the last two diagrams, um, are just what's supposed to be in place for school zones. And, uh, the new addition, all that's being put forward is that, uh, if it drops below more than 10 miles per hour, then, uh, it needs an extra sign.
And of course, this is a comment from this council.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Mr. Cooper, thank you so much for coming down, sharing this information. Um, I have received multiple emails dealing with the same situation that you stated. But you gave a great, um, presentation and a lot of information that I believe the administration and this council can look and work for. We talked about this in pre-council already. Um, and we'll be working with the administration to look at different school zones and see what things that we need to fix. I agree. I have younger kids. Um, and we want to make sure that our school zones are safe for them to walk or they're riding their bikes or just even the crossing guard, everything you stated. So thank you so much for coming and sharing this information.
Sir, thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. Um, I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations related to city business. Um, the first I would begin with, are there plans for the unassigned fund balance? And what is the current amount available in the unassigned fund balance? And how can we obtain that report for the public? Um, is there an updated, uh, vehicle inventory list? And what are the plans for the purchases, uh, within the FY '26 budget? Um, and then next part, the evaluation metrics for our performance contracts and the ability to amend, uh, the budget for additional recipients. How could we go about doing that process? And what would be the criteria for organizations, uh, to request an opportunity to be added to, uh, that list? Um, how many recipients have not received discretionary allotments that have been approved by this body? Uh, we know that there are a couple of organizations who are still waiting for resources that were approved by the council, but the, the checks just weren't cut for, uh, by the administration. So we need to know what's going on with that. Is there reporting on that? And how can you go about ensuring that those resources are given to those proper entities? Um, and we see that there really haven't been any executive changes. Uh, so I won't go into the idea of us, um, speaking on how we would approve those individuals in those capacities. Uh, but when we are selecting individuals to serve on our boards and commissions, I think it's vital that we can consider somewhat what the US Congress does when they have these hearings. Um, they allow those individuals who are petitioning for these positions to come in, and then they're properly vetted. Uh, we saw where the turnover, particularly with the Mobile Housing Authority, uh, we've seen about five, about five or six individuals that have come onto that board in the past year. Uh, and then the first thing that they did without really having a year's worth of experience was terminate the CEO. And so these are things that we need to know what the intent is for these individuals when they began serving in, uh, capacities that really impact the quality of life for all of Mobileans. Um, the, I would like to look at sections 2 dash 52 and, excuse me, 2 dash 51 and 52 of the rules. Um, I want to hope that we can move to having two monthly evening meetings. I would like to propose that hopefully someone can, uh, entertain that and have one of those evening meetings actually rotate, uh, within each of the seven districts. We know that a lot of people are not able to come down here and participate with this process, and that's something that we, uh, could consider. Um, the language in section 2 dash 62 allows for, uh, if there's a threat to public health, uh, safety, or welfare, that the idea for petitions can be suspended for 30 days. It says nowhere in there that you can put somebody out for 30 days. So if that's going to be the language, we need to make sure that we're, uh, going to add that into the rules. And we know what the Supreme Court has already ruled on. I'm talking about the United States Supreme Court on what disruptive behavior is. And I don't think we've seen any of that now here when we've been threatening individuals to be put out of this meeting. Um, there's a lot to unpack as well, uh, with 2 dash 62. Now, this is a formal request to amend the time for speakers to go back to five minutes so that we can actually have the ability to address these issues. And that would be consistent with what we do for public hearings, um, as well as any of the other forums that happen with our boards and commissions. And we know that time is not allowed, so we'll have to continue this for next week. Thanks for being on the floor.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over 11-056. Admit Chapter 11, Article 3, Section 11 of the City Code to include subsection titled "Alabama Construction Trade Academy Fund Fees."
Move to lay over for two weeks.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I lay over two weeks.
Resolution is held over 08-1381. Approve purchase order to Beard Equipment Company. 08-1382, approve purchase order to SHR International. 09-1385, create new capital account, Mobile Arena Furniture Fixtures and Equipment and Transfer Funds from the General Fund Operating Account into the new account. 21-1386, authorize contract with RGLG Inc. Doing Business as Service Master Services. 21-1387 and 1388 are authorizing contracts with Star Service of Mobile for HVAC maintenance and authorizing contract with Touchdown Cleaning Services for carpet cleaning. So moved.
Promptly move in second and in discussion.
Yes.
Um, uh, uh, Ms. Ingram?
Uh, President, I would like to note that on, uh, 21-1387, 21-1388, I share with you that didn't have, uh, the background information at the time. It, it is showing that it was sponsored by Ingram, but I do want to note that I did not have that background. And I would like to, um, gather more information regarding the performance of both contracts. Thank you.
Um, if you don't care to sponsor it, I believe that this is on time. You don't have to sponsor it. I can sponsor the resolution if you don't want to sponsor it.
I think that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you can change that to, uh, small, that'd be fine. Okay? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced, 64-057. Per council rules, this ordinance will be laid over for one week. Consent resolution is being introduced, 09-1396 through 60-1407. Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read. Exception of 37-1398. Yes, with that exception.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk?
09-1396, transfer funds from District 7 discretionary account to Traffic Engineering to assist with replacement of poles and signs. 31-1397, authorize mayor to apply, accept, and receive grant funding from the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for the 2025 ELD 21 Grant. No local match. 58-1399, authorize removal of weeds, group 1669. 40-1400, 1401, 1402, and 1403 are fixing the cost of demolition of structures at 2661 Bet B Street, 2906 Knoll Street, 777 Wellworth Street, 1807 White Avenue. 60-1404, 1405, 1406, and 1407 are determining appropriations to Continuous Learning Center Just For Development Laboratory.
Hold on, Madam Clerk. Again, any electronic device, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Madam Clerk?
Murphy High School and to Scarborough Model Middle School serve a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed?
CIP resolution is being introduced, 08-1408 through 21-1415.
Go back to the one.
We need to go back to 37-1398 to. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. 37, 30, no, we, uh, refuse unanimous consent on that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Um, CIP resolution is being introduced, 08-1408 through 21-1415. Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of 08-dash-1408, with the other one being laid over for one week.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
08-1408, approve purchase order to Inline LLC for replacement traffic signal poles for Highway 90 at Demetropolis Road.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Resolution is being introduced, 01-1409 through 21-1414. Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of Resolutions 08-1410 and 08-1412, with the others being laid over for one week.
Second.
Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule waived. Madam Clerk?
08-1410, approve purchase order to Environmental Systems Research Institute for GIS Online Training Credits. 08-1412, approve purchase order to Wilkins Miller LLC for annual audit of Police and Fire Pension Fund.
So moved.
Second. Promptly move in second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
Announcements. The city council meeting on next Tuesday, uh, scheduled for next Tuesday will be moved to Wednesday due to the Veterans Day holiday.
Okay. Uh, we're going to start with District 6, Councilman Woods.
No announcements, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Woods. District 4, Councilman Reynolds?
I'll be brief. I just want to say it's an honor to be able to be up here to serve him with everybody. It's nice that we moved through our first agenda very cleanly and smoothly. It's an honor to serve with, uh, new mayor Spiro and look forward to working with everyone. I know we've got big goals for this next four years, and we're going to accomplish a lot of them. We were very successful in the previous four years, so I look forward to working with everyone. And also want to say congratulations to, uh, our council president and vice president, uh, Small and Gregory on being reappointed. We think you did a good job, obviously by way of our support for to put you back in the job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District 1, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief as well. Um, I guess it's an honor to serve in this position. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve, uh, with Mayor Spiro and his council and administration and the team that we have, the council staff as well. We will have a community meeting in District 1 at the end of November. More information, we get the location locked down, but more information will be coming about that community meeting. Um, and then don't forget that at the end of this month, we will have one of the best parades, um, the Tomerville Parade, um, the week of Thanksgiving that Saturday. So we're going to have a great time in the Tomerville community in District 1. Um, and then you'll be hearing more about Pennsgiving. We've got some information coming in about that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Councilman Penn. District 2, Councilwoman Ingram?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to sincerely thank my colleagues for the warm welcome. I feel right at home. And to the incredible administrative staff, your professionalism and your dedication, it really means a lot. It really makes me feel like, okay, let's go get it, right? Let's go get this work done. Um, I also want to take the time to cheer with District 2 and to the Mobile citizens. It's just an honor to be able to serve and to serve. It's just an honor to be able to serve and to serve and give back to our community. I truly look forward to working with our new mayor and again, working with my colleagues here for the council. So again, thank you. Some updates for District Two. We are working on getting our Facebook established. As you know, this is my second day on the job, and so we're working to get that done. We also have a survey that will be going out for the priorities that will drive our budget and how we do the work. And I so look forward to the ribbon cutting of the campground. That's much needed. And we're going to make sure that we're placing our investments there. So again, thank you for this opportunity to serve and just thank you to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. District Five, Councilman Flemings.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to echo what Councilwoman Ingram said. I cannot say enough about the professional staff of the council's office and helping guide us through the first few days here on the job. As far as any other huge announcements, I don't have any. There will be a newsletter, District Five Newsletter going out. It will be biweekly. I've gotten several questions about that. So be on the lookout for that if you're in the district, as well as an updated Facebook page. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Flemings. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President, and joining my colleagues and thanking everybody and just glad to be here. For our new mayor, don't get the impression that every meeting is this smooth. Sometimes we do get a little contentious, and they don't always end as quickly as this one. So today is a great day in the city of Mobile, and we'll all get to lunch on time. As far as announcements go, I just need to piggyback on the fact that we got our Christmas ornaments from Goodwill today because I have my Christmas meeting already planned on the calendar for December first at the Mobile Museum of Art. It's the same that we do every year. We bring gifts for the residents at Wilmer Hall. We recognize community leaders as well as administrative representatives. And it's just a great evening for everyone to come out in fellowship and get to know one another a little bit better, as well as helping out everyone at Wilmer Hall. So it's a great evening. And postcards will be going out soon. I cannot believe we're already planning for my Christmas meeting. It seems like, you know, the year is just flying by. So thank you so much, everybody, for your hard work.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory, and to the citizens of District Three. I do appreciate each and every one of you for your support. Next week, while we were speaking about the holidays, we will be talking about our holiday meeting, Christmas meeting, and also our parade, the Parades of Threes, which is coming up very, very soon. But we'll make those dates and announcements on next week. Our first actual community meeting will be after the holidays. And I'm looking forward to meeting going throughout the district, talking to every neighborhood throughout District Three. And to the administration, welcome Mayor Spiro Charragatis. Looking forward to working with you and your administration. And to my colleagues, I do appreciate you all so much for your support, especially the old ones. Looking forward to working with you all for the next four years before we can move to City Four with the administration and the citizens of Mobile. And to my new colleagues, to Councilwoman Ingram and Councilman Flemings. No need to worry. The council here, we have your back, along with the city clerk and her staff. So anything that y'all need, please feel free to reach out to any one of us. We're here to help each other because we got to do this thing together. Anything from the Madam Clerk?
Oh, yes. Mr. President, I failed to mention that the meeting being moved to next Wednesday will change times. So the pre-council meeting on next Wednesday will start at ten AM, and the regular council meeting will start at eleven AM.
All right, thank you. Anything else on the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
I don't think the administration responded, Councilman Reynolds.
Nothing for me.
All in favor?